He says he could, that's funny time. And for anyone who does want to speak about not only the fire, but we're also going to talk about finance, and we're also about to talk about the Human Resources Department budget. Our city clerk, Annette Hipona, has put some cards at the entrances of the City Council Chamber. Please fill out the card and give it to either Ms. Hipona or someone on the dais. We can call you. You will have one minute to speak, one minute, and I will be enforcing that. Okay? So if you do want to speak, fill out a card as early as you can in the, in the hearing, and turn them into either our city clerk, Ms. Hipona, or, or someone on the dais. Okay? So let's get started. We're going to start, first of all, with the presentation from the Department of Finance and Administrative Services. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're going to start the budget study sessions with the Department of Finance and Administrative Services. And the Finance Director, Lawrence Chu, is going to present on behalf of the department.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Finance is committed to provide accurate and timely financial information, delivering high-quality and reliable IT service, safeguarding city assets, and providing excellent service to both internal and external customers. Now, we look at the finance organization. The finance is organized into four divisions: administrative division, accounting division, utility billing, and information services, with a total of thirty-three employees. The core services of the Finance Department include accounting, budgeting, business license, central service, information service, payroll, risk management, and utility billing. Finance monitor the fiscal activity of the city and provide financial reports to the department in a timely manner. We also add as a resource to the City Council and city management in financial affairs. We provide analytical support and financial advisory to all city departments. We also coordinate short- and long-range financial planning for all city departments. We also assist the city department to minimize insurance claim costs and to protect city asset and infrastructure. The Information Service Division manage city voice and data technology and ensure maximum performance of technology systems. The UB Division perform accurate and timely reading and building of utility service and explore new ways to make bill payment, bill paying easily. Now, we look at some of the accomplishments that we have made in the last two years. We received the Government Finance Officer Association, GFOA, certificate of achievement in financial reporting for the fiscal year 2015. We also received a distinguished budget reward for fiscal year 2015 and 16. The Accounting Division successfully implement the Government Accounting Standard Board Gatsby 68 pronouncement on pension accounting and reporting. All the mandated financial report will complete and submit on time. Finance also implemented state mandated significant benefit for the part-time pay, for the part-time employee in the payroll system. We have around 200 to 300 part-time employee. It all depends on the time of the year. The Information Service Division successfully upgraded Anna Gulf Business License Cashing System and the Land Management System. We also implemented new water rates and garbage rate in the Hanson System. And in 2005, the Information Service Division also upgraded the city phone system from digital to true view IP. Now, we look at the goal and objective for the fiscal year 17 and 18. Accounting and budget will prepare the comprehensive annual financial reported cover and the annual budget for the GFOA award. We will complete and update the city cost allocation plan and the use of E-study. We'll continue to streamline workflow between Finance Department and other department in the city, and we'll also provide IFRS financial system training to all city staff. The Utility Billing Division will issue the utility bill within seven days of meter reading and should promote electronic customer payment. Right now, we have around thirteen percent of the customers sign up for the online bill paid, and we want to increase the percentage to maybe around thirty to twenty to thirty percent in the next two years. And Risk Management will administer the self-insurance fund and recommend appropriate reserve level for any claims against the city. Now, we look at the Information Service Division. They will manage the city technology system and maintain a network uptime of ninety-nine point seven percent. They will also keep customer service appointment on time ninety-nine percent of the time.
And those are customers within the city government?
Those are the internal customer. They call the Information Services Department.
Great.
Now, we look at some of the major changes when we compare to the prior budget. ISD is reorganized into two session to improve operation efficiency. The ISD operation provides support and maintain computer programs such as the finance system, HR and payroll system, Anna Gulf Business License Cashing and Land Management System. The ISD operation also manage the workflow development, application configuration, and system architect. The second division is the ISD customer support. They provide help desk support for city employees. They also manage the city computer network, voice, and data communication. Now, we look at the Finance Department budget summary by category. This include all the funds. The proposed staffing for the next two fiscal year is thirty-two point eighty-three full-time equipment. Project revenue increased by around thirteen percent to nine point two million in fiscal year 2017. This is due to increase in service billing from the self-insurance fund. On the expenditure side, total expenditure increased by fifteen percent to thirteen point nine million in fiscal year 2017. This is due to salary adjustment. The other operating account like service and surprise, other charges, fixed charges, they are pretty much remain flat for the next two fiscal year. Another way to look at the operation of the Finance Department is the, is the budget expenditure by fund. Total expenditure increased by around one point eight million, or fifteen percent to thirteen point nine million in fiscal year 2017. General fund increased by $250,000 in fiscal year 2017 due to salary adjustment. Risk management increased by around $700,000 in fiscal year 2017 due to outside legal costs and increase in the insurance premium. And there's also around $200,000 in salary adjustment. Information Service Fund increased by $900,000 in fiscal year 2017 due to around $400,000 in salary adjustment. $450,000 increase in professional service, computer hardware, and software maintenance Now, we focus on the budget summary for the general fund.
Before you go on, is there any value to, you know, with the advent of iPads and iPhones being as powerful as an iPad or laptop, is there some value to moving away from a laptop or a desktop and moving people to more mobile devices? Is there a value in that in terms of efficiency and/or cost?
It all depends on what application they are using. There are some application, like for some of the city is going to have a new asset management system that will be presented to the council on next Monday. Yes, that's a value if we issue the iPad to the city employee so they can access the data onsite rather than carrying a laptop. Yes, on certain application, there are value add to the efficiency of the entire organization operation.
So are we, do we have a, is there a plan, in other words, that where we can become more efficient, both from a productivity efficiency and financial efficiency, we're moving in that direction?
Mr. Mayor, not all of the city's business applications can be utilized effectively on, on an iPad. Many of us have multiple applic-, you know, I have a laptop, I have an iPad because for mobility, for certain things, Word documents, you can use an iPad for that, but for Excel spreadsheets and detailed kinds of financial analysis, we just can't use those.
Okay, thank you.
So it just varies from department to department. Like for some with department, they have a lot of like outside work, then iPad may help them to streamline the operation. But for finance, we are very heavy intensive using the Excel spreadsheet. I don't think iPad is, is that efficient for finance department.
Got it, okay.
Now, we look at the general fund expenditure. The general fund expenditure increased by around $250,000 in fiscal year 2017 due to salary adjustment. Service and surprise, other charges, and fixed charge status quo for the next two fiscal Now, we look at the non-departmental revenue and expenditure. The same information was presented to the council on last Wednesday budget study session. The total revenue for the non-departmental for fiscal year 2017 is sixty-two point eight million. The first one, taxes include property tax, sales tax, utility user tax, franchise fee, and business license.
Okay, you lost me there.
Uh, the slide number sixty.
And this is?
This is the citywide revenue and expenditure that does not belong to any city department.
Yeah, I think we need to make sure that that's really, because it doesn't really say that at the top, citywide. We're not spending sixty-four million on, on your department.
Yes.
This is across all city?
This is across all city department, yes. The miscellaneous revenue include the budget for the excess E-ref that we have discussed last week. In fiscal year 2017, the city budget two point two million in excess E-ref revenue. Then in 2000, in fiscal year 2018, the city budget one point five million in excess E-ref revenue. So that's why you will see a twenty-five percent drop in revenue from fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year seventeen, and another twenty-five percent drop in the miscellaneous revenue.
And that's miscellaneous, yeah.
From fiscal year seventeen to fiscal year 2018.
And that, for people who are here and watching, that E-ref money comes from what source?
It's coming from the excess property taxes the city, the county received after the state distributed to the school district.
So that's something we have no control over.
Yes.
We don't, yeah.
No.
And it's also something that's going away.
Five years, you say it's going to be probably gone.
Yes, it's around four to five years, that's a maximum.
Why we can't count on it on a continual basis? We don't count it continually, because it's going to go eventually, so we use it as a one-time-only expense.
And the city policy should budget the one-time revenue, one-time revenue for the one-time expenditure. Now, we focusing on the expenditure side. Salary and benefit is where the city budget for the retiree health payment of one point eight million in fiscal year 2017 and one point nine million in fiscal year 2018. The transfer out, the very, the very last item on the expenditure side, the transfer out of nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar. This represent four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar general fund subsidy to the senior center.
Could you say that again?
It's four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar general fund subsidy to the senior center operation.
That's to the Doger Senior Center.
Yes. And five hundred and forty thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the water fund to pay for the use of the water.
Oh, for the city's use?
For the city use of the water.
So that's just our water bill?
And this conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have.
If we could go back to slide three. Are any of these positions currently vacant?
Uh, we, on the information services side, there are three position vacant, is the information service manager, there is a, there is a program analyst, and then one network administrator.
And do you plan to fill those positions in this next two-year budget cycle, or, or are those positions staying open?
Our plan is to consolidate a couple of the positions so that we are able to afford to hire a high-level IT professional. Right now, the market is so competitive for IT people, and we need someone at a high level who can direct our information services program from a broad perspective across the city. We have to look at all of our business systems, look at opportunities for us to use technology in a different way, and to do a strategic plan for technology to address many of the positions that have been lost across departments, and to make it easier for staff in all the departments to conduct the business of the city using technology as opposed to more positions. So the intent is to rewrite the job description from the manager position that we had to a higher-level position that hopefully we can be competitive with, with the private sector, and bring someone in who really can do a broad-scale assessment of what our technology needs are.
And then vacancies in the network administrator, or the, what is it down there at the bottom? The program analyst would be then consolidated.
Right.
And on the payroll side, does the payroll supervisor have those two clerks currently in that office, or are those?
Yes, they have, we have two account clerk, one in the payroll office. They are filled.
So there are two people in the payroll office?
Yes.
And then the other account clerk is?
There are one payroll supervisor and two account clerk, one in the payroll operation.
Ah, okay.
It's a three, three-person operation in the payroll.
And those positions are all filled?
They are all filled position.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Chair? Lawrence, I had a question on slide number sixteen. There's a line number three there on the revenue half of that page, the top half of the page, line number three, says rents and interest. And it's sort of, it's lower than what it was in fifteen, it's going down, so can you give an example of what kinds of rents we have? Is that from our, our fields, our halls? Where, where's that rent and interest coming from?
Those are essentially from our city facilities. So for example, 350 Ninety Street, we received revenue. We had a long-term vacancy, then we had the charter school that was there for about eighteen months, almost two years. So there hasn't been a, a long-term lease at that facility for a number of years, but we are looking at the potential for bringing the Daly City Youth Health Center to 350 Ninety Street. And if we are successful in meeting all the ADA requirements that are necessary for that operation, we're looking at a long-term lease, like a five-year lease, so that, that rent will, or those lease payments will, will increase.
And does that also include the Westlake Park facilities, like the Pacelli Center and?
I, I believe the rental income, um, yeah, so that may include some of those rentals as well.
Yeah. So that would be like for the wedding receptions and the?
Yeah, so the reason I'm?
Family reunions and?
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is like, and, and it's not for tonight, but, but it's to keep in mind, when we're talking about, yesterday we were talking about, we were talking about the fees that we charge the community for, you know, the sports programs, after-school programs, things of that sort. If we don't already have it folded into that discussion, I think it would be appropriate at that time to talk about, okay, one half of the equation would be, what's the fees we're charging to run the programs, but what are the fees we're charging to rent community centers, the halls, the rooms? Because we have to look at it from the perspective that, I mean, you go to San Francisco and they charge an arm and a leg, you go down the peninsula and they charge another arm and a leg to use a hall, it's, you know, three hundred and fifty dollars an hour is not uncommon. And if we're not charging that, then like the fees for the programs, we end up subsidizing a lot of this. So, and that's why I ask, because it seemed a little low to me, so maybe there's an opportunity to generate a little bit more, if not, if nothing else, to help offset the cost of the IT professional. I know you've been struggling with that for a long time, we can't find one. Just for the sake of clarity, again, you mentioned that the challenges we're having. What is the going rate for an IT professional of the caliber we need to run our IT programs for Daly City?
So for a city our size, out in the marketplace today, there are numerous, numerous recruitments going on for what the titles that are usually used for that level of position today is chief information officer, or chief innovation officer, things like that. And we're looking at probably somewhere between a hundred and fifty thousand and a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and that would probably be on the low end.
Yeah, that is.
I would definitely say on the low end.
That is very low end, yeah, I can tell you, working in the IT world.
Friends who have those jobs.
That is about maybe a quarter of what people at that get.
Right, and that's, that's the challenge that we have, particularly being here in Silicon Valley, you know, trying to compete with, you know, all the Silicon Valley firms that are hiring people with high-level tech skills, you know? We really aren't in a position to afford that. And in fact, the former incumbent in the manager position, which is below the vision, the position we're envisioning now, left to go to San Francisco to get a higher-paying job.
Right, okay. Any other questions for Finance Director?
Just one comment, is that when we're looking at those fees for the rental things, we should probably throw in, just for comparison, what they're charging in Colma, since they, that place is rented a lot, the community center, and a lot of people from here also rent that facility, just.
Yeah, maybe, maybe like a geographic graph, because?
We can do a survey of, yeah, local.
Yeah, it's something of a proximity issue for people when they're renting, like, you know, how far is it from the freeway, BART, that kind of thing, and, and let's see what it looks like. And then that's a good time when we're discussing the fees to also talk about the rental costs and, and what we're paying there. Okay, not seen any more questions, Lawrence, thank you very much. Redacted for?
Were there any cards on it?
No, none of the cards are about finance, so, okay.
Then we will move on to the second department.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed there are a lot of people still outside.
Yep.
And I think in fairness, I think we should open the doors up so that they could participate.
Yeah, I wonder if we have anything that can do that. I think if Conrad's around, he might be able to.
Julie, can you?
Can someone get that open, and then, I don't know if there's chairs out there, but if he can pull in some chairs, that'd be great.
And, and people there, chairs down here in front. Come on down and fill in.
Okay, we're moving on now to the Human Resources by our budget. Put your fingers. Give it, give it a minute for them to open up the, the doors there. Thanks, Conrad. Okay, we're going to go on now to Human Resources Budget. Good evening, Ms. Maltby.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, just got to get right into it.
All right, getting right into it. Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. I'm mindful of the full house, so I'm hoping to be not taking too much of your time and that this presentation is straightforward.
Can you speak up a little?
I can, how about that?
You just might as well just speak right into it. Like you're rapping.
Like I'm rapping, okay. I'm not very good at rapping. I'm pleased tonight to be able to present to you the 2017, 2018 HR budget. The mission statement of Human Resources is to anticipate and effectively respond to the diverse needs of our employees, their families, other city departments, and the public by providing quality services to make our community a better place to live and work. Much like Finance, the majority of our customers are internal, there are other city departments, individual employees and their family members, labor groups, and retirees. We have about four hundred and fifty full-time employees, three hundred hourly employees, and four hundred retirees, and that number is growing. Here's the org chart, the director, that's me at the top, we have a senior management analyst who oversees the training and development and budget, as well as assisting me with the labor and employee relations issues.
And before you go on, are all those positions full?
These are all full, correct. We have two human resources analysts, one that handles our workers' compensation program, and the other that handles our recruitment program, and one HR specialist who handles the day-to-day administrative tasks, personnel action forms, invoices, and anything that might pop up during the day. HR's core services are to administer employee health and welfare benefits programs and the safety program, to administer the workers' compensation program, the recruitment and selection process. For the past fiscal year, we conducted forty-one recruitments. We anticipate about forty more recruitments because of the workforce. We have an aging workforce, lots of retirements. So about forty recruitments in sixteen, seventeen, and about thirty-three or so in seventeen, eighteen. Another core service is that we manage the collective bargaining process, as you know, and once we complete the bargaining process, the contractual changes, we have to make sure that they're implemented for all eleven groups and that they're followed consistently. We work with management, unions, and employees to resolve employee, employer problems at the lowest and least detrimental level. We also handle class and compensation issues and employee recognition and communications. How we support citywide priorities, we continue to prepare the next generation of employees through succession planning, through the leadership succession and supervisory academies. We continue to identify opportunities for greater cost-effectiveness and efficiency through shared services, including the San Mateo County Regional Training Consortium, which is a shared service. This past year, our employees participated in county-wide leadership, supervisory, and lead worker academies, and workshops that included business writing essentials, Intro to Supervision, Social Media 101, and Mastering Effective Communications. And we also continue to actively recruit and refer qualified and diverse candidates to departments for city employment. Continuing on, we were, we will continue to work with other city departments to anticipate and respond to changes and staffing needs due to the, the increased number of retirements, as I mentioned. Continue to promote the city of Daly City as a great place to work with a variety of career possibilities, and promote employee development by providing tech training opportunities, professional development for groups and for individuals. In 2012, the City Council adopted a wellness policy that was very well-received, and HR continues to support the wellness initiatives, including the Fit Fest, Walk-A-Thon, Healthy Recipe Showdown, Lunch and Learn seminars, Healthy Vending, and Employee Wellness Month. And I'd like to give a shout-out to the Recreation Department who helps facilitate some of these events for us. We will continue to conduct exit interviews. It's important to get information and feedback from retiring and other employees who are leaving city employment. And we will continue to work with our fairly new sustainability coordinator who's in the city manager's office to implement electronic processes for, for our forms and functions. Some of the accomplishments are that we finally transitioned workers' compensation fully into the Human Resources Department. It was in Finance for many decades, and it was quite a process to get it fully acclimated into HR. We think it was a into HR, we think it was a pretty seamless process. We, as I mentioned earlier, completed forty-one recruitments, there were forty-four new hires in 2015, sixty-three of our employees attended Training and Development Consortium in 2016, and we completed, as you know, negotiations with eleven unions and associations. Goals and objectives going forward are fairly similar to what they were our last go-around. During this budget cycle, we hope to complete negotiations with eleven unions and associations, to work with departments to resolve employee/employer problems at the lowest and least detrimental level, and to provide services in a manner that foster the overall best interests of the city. And to continue to promote healthier and safer workplace by implementing wellness initiatives, we do have a new committee, we combined our safety committee with our wellness committee, and the efforts are a little bit more robust at this point. And we are working with the city departments to promptly report industrial injuries. So, the next few slides are numbers. This is the first budget cycle where we've included the actual cost of the workers' compensation program, which if you look at total expenditures on the bottom, it accounts for about four million out of the five million we have in expenditures, and the next slide will detail that.
Sean, before you go there, can you get back to that slide?
Yep.
Can you, can you give me an example of, you know, you have a line item, there are other charges? It says requested for seventeen and eighteen, you have two-point-one million and then two-point-two million. Can you give an example of what, what is other charges, what's in there?
It's a lot of money.
So, Lawrence, can you tell me what you're charging me? That, so that is, that's not from the general fund, and we'll get into the details of that, but?
I just want to have an understanding of what, when we look at line items like that, which is other charges, what does, give me a highlight, it doesn't have to be a list, just an example of the kinds of things that?
Some of the other charges may include?
Get it right closer.
Membership, travel meeting, and some of the training. So, then I include the other charges like the bad debt.
Like the what?
The bad debt, the money that we cannot collect.
The bad debt?
Oh, bad debt.
It's a very minimal amount, yeah.
So, I think they're looking at, is that two-point-two?
No, I think they, Christine, do you have the detail breakdown?
Those are numbers that finance gives to us.
You can sit up here if you want, that's easier for you.
The other charges included in that, I, I'm thinking is the other services we do for the medical review for safety officers, there's a lot of various medical reviews that we do for them. And also, it is our insurance for workers' comp.
Oh, okay, 'cause that, that should almost be in a line by itself in the future?
And it will be in the next slide, I believe it'll, it'll be more clear.
Insurance premium cost, Christine, or insurance cost out the door for us?
Insurance premium cost and just the cost of running the workers' comp program.
Got it, okay, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
So, that's not something, that's something that's a required cost?
Yes, these are, these are, unlike fixed charges, like overhead charges that all the departments share, these are unique to the HR function for workers' comp. Since we have consolidated the workers' comp function now in HR, it used to be handled under a larger risk management umbrella in finance, but we've split it out, and so those are costs that previously were not reflected in the HR budget.
Right, so that is a big number.
Yeah, so, if it's possible in the future to put a little indent there and list a few things, because otherwise, it looks like, well, heck, we could do without that. But then, when you say it's our workers' comp insurance premium, well, that we can't do without.
Yeah, generally, in every single budget, the only costs that are discretionary costs, and they're pretty much listed the same way in every department, it would be services and supplies and program costs. Those are the discretionary costs. Everything else, salaries and benefits, we can't just arbitrarily change because those are based on negotiated agreements for compensation and benefits. All the other kinds of fixed charges are things that we allocate across every department in the city, so they all pay a portion of the cost for certain things.
Makes sense, thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to the next slide, this might be helpful. So, in the general fund is how we normally, or not normally, we historically had categorized human resources as general fund only, so that number really has not changed, it's gone, it's gone up a little bit in 2018, and that is related to salary and benefits. So, the next?
And this is, we're looking at revenue or we're looking at expenditures?
On the, the general fund is?
Those are the expenditure.
Expenditures.
This is what we spend on, all right.
Correct. And the next, so the workers' comp, safety, unemployment, health and wellness, that's new to the HR budget. We just finalized HR taking over the budget portion, which is why the numbers look, look different than they did last go-around.
So, that's the program that moved from finance to HR?
Correct, right. So, if you look at the general fund, the top line, that, you can see it's, it's minimal, but this, the, the next few lines are substantial because of the workers' comp and the safety pieces that are, as we talked about, are not in our control. And then, the last, and this is another new way of describing our budget, is how HR costs the general fund, so you can see the total expenditures constitutes one-point-nine percent of the general fund. And if you look at the top, the funding, the staffing, I have five people, but it's listed at three-point-six-five because the funds are allocated from the workers' comp piece. So, for myself and for our workers' comp analyst, we get paid from the workers' comp fund, if that makes sense.
So, what you're saying, in other words, is even though you have five people, three-point-six-five of those people get paid from the general fund, the rest are paid from the workers' compensation fund?
Correct.
Got it.
And this is the first time we've highlighted it that way.
Let's get to that.
Yeah.
And that's all I have, do you have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Maltby? I think we answered them all.
I think, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, nice job. Okay, before we get started with fire, which is our last budget matter, let me reiterate, for those of you who might have come in late, traditionally, we do not take comment, because this is a hearing, it's just a matter of allowing the public to hear firsthand what we're doing, given the exigency of the topics. What we're going to do is allow public comment, so fill out one of these cards, they're at the entrances of the city council chamber, get them to someone like our, our city clerk or our assistant city manager. We'll give you one minute to speak. However, I have talked to Nick Rossia, who is the president of the firefighters' union beforehand, and we've agreed on ten minutes for him, which is what he requested, to speak on behalf of the firefighters, okay? So, again, fill out your card, Arnett Hipona, our city clerk, will be keeping time, so when you hear her, or she's waving her hands, or standing up, or whatever.
The beeper goes off.
She may be up here keeping time, too. Chief, good evening, thank you, and please begin.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I'll be presenting the fire budget.
Yeah, talk up a little bit.
There we go. How's that? Testing, testing?
Better.
Okay, great. Fire Department mission statement, really just refers to service and safety to the public. The organization chart, in 2003, the North County Fire Authority was put together, and that org chart up there reflects positions from all three of the jurisdictions. All of those chief officer positions down till you get to the fire companies are all shared by the other cities. So, essentially, city of Daly City saves forty percent of the cost of all of those positions above the firefighter ranks there, and that's been part of our, our model for thirteen years. Each of those years, we have, through economy of scale and reductions, we've eliminated positions that became vacant, about eleven positions so far. And throughout the years, we've been successful in saving millions of dollars to give back to each of the three cities in order for them to fund other types of programs. Our core service obviously is emergency response, and there's a whole list of services that are provided in order to deal with that emergency response, and I won't go through each one of them. But, if you look at the bottom of that list, the fire service has basically been the one that's had to take on most of the types of services that nobody else wants to do. We were never involved in active shooter, WMD, special operations in the area of hazardous materials, those all came on in, in the past years because there's nobody else to deal with those kinds of emergencies. So, there's a lot of specialization besides just going to structured fires and emergency medical calls. Of course, we administer the, the fire code and we do the fire and life safety inspections of the multifamily, commercial and permitted occupancies within the city. You'll see one of our accomplishments as we go forward. We, we are one of the only fire agencies that inspect each and every business, multifamily, and permitted occupancies once a year. You won't find that in any other fire agencies, I think, as far as you can see, that do that. We think that that's helped us be successful in our, in our low fire loss and getting us out in the community and being able to make businesses in the multifamily occupancies as safe as we can make them. Community outreach, that has to do with all the, the efforts that we put forward in terms of trying to get out in the public and avoid having accidents or events that require emergency response. It involves the community emergency response team training, hands-only CPR is another one of the, the new initiatives that we've been very active in the last couple of years. And then organizational support, that's all behind the scenes, that's all the stuff that's done in order to allow for the services to be provided and support of, of the people. So, support for citywide priorities under economic development, we, we manage the plan check review in order to save money. About a year ago, we contracted out our plan checking, we manage that, we're still the interface with the businesses, but that was the only way that we were able to keep up with, with the workload, with the number of people that we have in our fire prevention bureau. And it's, it's worked out and been positive for us in terms of doing, we've had no issues, but we're still there in a consultation and interface with the developers and contractors. North County Fire Authority, I, I talked a little bit about that in terms of what it has done. We have continued for all the thirteen years to look at other ways to reduce money. I manage three cities, and all of our people are involved in, in doing and providing services and making cost reductions wherever we could over those years, and we'll continue to do Of course, we're into stopping the escalation of medical emergencies, structured fires, and any other emergencies that, that occur in the three communities we protect. I talked about the, the inspections that we do and the training that's done. It takes a whole lot to keep our people trained and keep them certified as EMTs and paramedics. We have achieved a ninety-eight percent customer satisfaction rating over all the years, continue to have high marks in that area. Of course, the outreach I talked about, and in terms of trying to avoid incidents before they happen. We are involved in the emergency planning and preparedness of the city and its plans. We don't have a position for that anymore, so it's, like everybody else, we're doing more with less, but we are maintaining at least a plan for the city. The accomplishment for the department, we measure our response time, and explain a little bit about the response time. A lot of departments will give you varying numbers that, that have a different meaning to them. If you get an average, they maybe just be talking about the time it takes to drive to a call. We actually measure from the time that an incident is received from the dispatch center, it's then alerts the fire station, and then the time to get to that call, and that's a total reflex time of seven minutes. Our travel time is four minutes. But just so you know that it's not just a four-minute timeframe, it's overall seven minutes by the time it's dispatched. We turn out, meaning we get our gear on, we get in our engine, our ladder truck, and we respond. But that's a very fast and very impressive mark, ninety-six percent. Same thing has to do with fire response, similar as a medical response. The, the multiple response, that has to do with when we have a, a response that requires for a structured fire, and we need multiple fire companies to respond, we measure how long it takes to get all those fire companies to that location, that's why you see an eight-minute, because they're coming from multiple districts in order to arrive, and that eleven-minute timeframe is a total reflex time. We've been able to maintain a ninety percent fire confinement success rate, meaning we hold the fires to the floor of the room of origin, and then I mentioned the ninety percent, ninety-eight percent overall customer service satisfaction.
Chief, just so we're clear, the dispatch of the fire department for, for these things you mentioned here, that's coming from the county of San Mateo?
It has, and it has been for, since the implementation of the paramedic program in about nineteen ninety-eight. So, I mentioned about the training, we spend two or three hours a shift training in order to accomplish an average of two-hundred-and-forty hours per, per firefighter to get them through the required and/or recurrent training that, that we need to provide for our people. The hundred percent completion of the, the paramedic and EMT training, some years ago, we eliminated the cost to the city for having to pay overtime to send people out, and we do it on duty. So, all those hours normally were done in the past, were, were accomplished on overtime, and now we do it in-service on duty.
Just a quick question here, when you're having a training, then the firefighters come with their engine or truck or whatever they're assigned to, correct?
Exactly.
So, there might be?